Welcome. We will start up. Welcome to the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District Board of Education. If you wish to speak in public comments, please go ahead and grab a card real quick. We will be stopping cards no later than 15... Accepting cards no later than 15 minutes after the board meeting begins. At this time, can we get the attendance, please?
Ms. Free, here. Ms. Amesqua, here. Ms. Langham Alter, here. Mr. Rios, here. Dr. Vedari, here. Dr. Consio, Dr. Brassoff.
This time, Dr. Vedari will introduce the person who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, President Brashov. Good evening. It is such an honor for me to introduce Ms. Susan Nielsen. Susan Nielsen was born in the Philippines, and if you like Ms. Susan Nielsen, you can go up to the podium. She was born in the Philippines. Her family was stationed in Asia, but later the Navy would move them to the United States. She attended John Glenn High School and played clarinet in the jazz band. While at John Glenn High School, Susan was elected freshman class president. Susan started her career at NLMUSD during the 1992-93 school year as a head start preschool teacher and became a TANLA site rep at Ramona. By the way, you and I began teaching the same year, but I was in LAUSD. In 2014, Susan was appointed to the position of Minority at Large Director. She served as Elementary Director, Office Number One on TANLA's Executive Board, and as a California Delegate to the National Education Association Representative Assembly four times. Susan was a recipient of the 2018 WHO Award for Outstanding Contributions to Education. She was an active participant in CTA, serving on the Board of Directors from 2014 through 2025. Susan's exemplary teaching skills, leadership style, and ability to collaborate with others have been recognized by Ramona colleagues as they selected her on four occasions to be their Teacher of the Year. Susan has served as a mentor teacher in different capacities for the early education program. In 2022 through 2023, Susan developed a new teacher support group called Growing Great Teachers. Susan is blessed to be married to her incredible husband, Abraham Avalos, her amazing three bonus children, and her three bonus grandchildren, and in leadership at Calvary Chapel of Downey. She's in leadership in Calvary Chapel of Downey. She serves in the Titus Two Women's Ministry, and her husband serves as a worship leader. Please join me in giving her an applause.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for
At this time, Vice President Dr. Consio will publicly announce the actions taken by the Board in closed session.
There were four actions taken in closed session by the Board of Education. The Board of Education took action during closed session at a meeting held on June 23rd, 2025. All right. Yes, Mr. Brassoff, the President took... Sorry, the Board of Education took action. Four line items, the first one being, the Board of Education took action during closed session at its meeting held on June 23rd, 2025 by a vote of seven to zero to appoint Tanya Magagna to the position of Assistant Superintendent Education Services at a monthly rate of $22,302.83, excluding any longevity as applicable effective to be determined on the motion of Dr. Vedari, seconded by Mr. Rios. Motion carried seven to zero. The Board of Education took action during closed session at its meeting held on June 23rd, 2025 by a vote of five to one to one to appoint Adrian Valdez to the position of Chief of School Safety at a monthly rate of $15,256, excluding any longevity as applicable to be effective to be determined on the motion of Ms. Amesqua, seconded by Ms. Free. Motion carried five, one to one. Third action taken, the Board of Education moved to appoint Otto Fernandez to the position of Manager Warehouse at a monthly rate of $8,905, excluding any longevity as applicable effective to be determined on the motion of Mr. Brassoff, seconded by Ms. Amesqua. Motion carried seven to zero. And finally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to release the temporary certified employee identified in Resolution 24-25-16 pursuant to Education Code Section 44954-BRAVO, effective at the end of the 2024-2025 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to take such further additional actions as are necessary and appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this resolution on the motion of Mr. Brassoff, seconded by Mr. Rios. Motion passed seven to zero, and that concludes all decisions, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have before us the minutes of June 2nd, 2025. Entertaining the motion?
Aye. Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we have the... Before us, the minutes of June 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And finally, the adoption of the agenda for this meeting.
So moved. Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Dr. Gatto, at this time, will introduce the new management employees.
Good evening, President Brashov, Vice President Consio, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, colleagues, and guests. Mr. Nguyen, please proceed to the podium. Mr. Nguyen began his professional career working as a school social work intern with ABC Unified in 2017. Since that time, he has developed himself professionally by working as a school bus driver in the Newport-Mesa Unified School District, school bus driver from Westminster School District, and most recently dispatch supervisor for the Garden Grove Unified School District. Mr. Nguyen is well experienced in the management of bus driver personnel, collaboration with mechanic department scheduling, California Highway Patrol bus maintenance and safety inspections, and operations for a transportation department with over 140 buses. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to introduce Mr. Ryan Nguyen, Director of Transportation for the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District.
Good evening, President Brashov, Vice President Consio, members of the Board, Superintendent Baker, and the Norwalk-Lamarada community. I'm truly honored by the invitation to be here tonight and incredibly thankful to the Board of Education for the opportunity to serve Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District as your Transportation Director. Since 2012, I've had the privilege of collaborating with many dedicated school administrators, teachers, and transportation professionals to achieve district goals, all while successfully completing a master's degree at Cal State Long Beach. I'm passionate about creating safe, efficient, and accessible transportation for students and very excited to work closely with NLM staff to ensure academic success in the classroom. As Mr. Garcia, Director of Human Resources, said at last board meeting, "This is the best district to be around. I am grateful to join your community and fully committed to upholding the district model. Every student, future ready, our promise." Thank you again to the Board of Education for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to the 25-26 school year. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Dr. Salas Sarmiento, please proceed to the podium. Dr. Salas Sarmiento's educational career began in 1997, working within various school districts as a teacher. Since that time, she has supported student achievement, working as an assistant principal with Bellflower Unified School District, principal with Centralia School District, and most recently, principal in the Tustin Unified School District. Dr. Salas Sarmiento is well experienced in leading the development and execution of strategic plans, working with dual immersion programs, redesigning learning spaces to support innovative teaching practices, and spearheading professional development based on best practices for all students. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to introduce Dr. Estela Salas Sarmiento, Principal, Dolan Elementary School.
Good evening, President Brashov, Vice President Consio, members of the Board, and Superintendent Baker. I'm honored to be here tonight and would like to take a moment to acknowledge my incredible family that is here with me, my mom, Rosario Salas. Hi, mommy. My husband Ramon, and my twins Emilio and Mateo, who are proud Lamarada High School graduates, class of 2025. I was also surprised today with my sister Jasmine, who is a graduate of John Glenn High School, and my brother-in-law, who currently works at Corvallis. So they're all here today, and I'm so, so grateful for you to give me this opportunity to have them here. Norwalk-Lamarada has been a meaningful part of my life for close to 30 years. My family and I have deep roots in this district. My children and relatives have attended schools across the community, Lamarada, John Glenn High School, Harrogate, Moffett, Escalona, Eastwood, just to name a few. I'm truly excited to contribute to the mission and the vision that you, along with Superintendent Baker, have set for our district. It is my hope that my 28 years of experience in education will support and strengthen the incredible work already happening in Norwalk-Lamarada. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve as principal for Dolan Elementary Go Huskies and for the invitation to include and acknowledge my family as part of the NLM tradition. It is a first in my career, and I truly, truly appreciate being able to share this moment with my family, and particularly my mom. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
President Brashov, that concludes tonight's introductions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is now the opportunity for public comment. We have two speakers, so we'll start with Ms. Erin Berry.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Erin Berry, and I'm here tonight to strongly encourage the district to offer the Student Go Pass to all students. The Go Pass program allows students to ride LA Metro buses, including but not limited to the Norwalk Transit, for free, not just to and from school, but also to jobs, the library, tutoring, and community activities. It promotes access, independence, and opportunity for students across our district. And the best part is, the program comes at no cost to the district. All that's needed is for the administration to complete and submit a simple application. That's it. As a community, we're already paying into this service. Our families should be benefiting from it. It's a waste to let these resources go unused when they make a real difference for our students. Many students live outside the district bus zones and don't qualify for school transportation, mine included. Without the Go Pass, their families are left trying to juggle parent work schedules, car pools, or the cost of public transit, which quickly adds up. Riding the bus five days a week can cost $20 per week back and forth from school, and that's $80 a month per student. This is a significant burden, especially for low-income families. I personally have experienced this. Since summer school started, my work schedule has changed. I begin work at Benton at 7:00 AM, but my kids don't start at Norwalk High until 8:00 AM. I can't take them myself. Therefore, every day, I have been relying on Norwalk Transit to get them to and from... To get them from Lamarada to Norwalk High. While this only lasts one more week for me, many families are in this situation all year long. Providing the Go Pass would remove a major barrier for those families. It would also expand access to enrichment opportunities, after-school jobs, and resources that many students can't reach without transportation. Plus, it may even help attract students from outside the district, students who would like to attend our schools but don't have a way of getting here because of no just... No school buses. This is a simple, no-cost, and high-impact solution. I respectfully ask the Board to move forward with submitting the application for the Student Go Pass so that all of our students in our district can benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Garcia?
Good evening, Board members, community. So what was just handed to them is a notice of cease and desist with Southeast Academy adverse action. In other words, what my lawyer is asking is for there to be a stop of all present actions towards merging Southeast Academy with John Glenn High School. We've spoken about this in depth. The students have spoken to you, parents have spoken to you. The problem is, is we weren't given a chance to really speak before you guys made your decision. And whatever you want to call it, if anything, it's a violation of the trust between the Board and the community. And there's a... There's still a chance you guys can make that right. We could still sit down, we could talk about this, is what we would like to do, what we've been wanting to do from the very beginning. But we were robbed of that. And so, we're going about it this way. I did not want it to go this way, and I gave ample opportunity for us to sit down and talk like adults about this, and now here we are. And like I was told, right? Go for it, right? Well, we're going for it. And now we're gonna go and hopefully we'll get this stopped, and then we'll have to talk about it. And if you guys really want to get it over there and merge it, let's talk about how we do that in a way that the community accepts it and not just the way the Board sees it. You didn't tell us why you're doing it. You didn't give us no specific reasons as to why it's so important to merge these two schools. You just went and did it in the middle of the night, and it's very frustrating. You're probably tired of hearing about this. How do you think we feel? I have three kids who go to Southeast Academy, one that goes to John Glenn, one whose classroom at John Glenn was moved to accommodate Southeast Academy. My son was special needs. Have you talked to the other special needs students, to their families, and let them know what's going on? Did you tell them a military-style academy's coming into your school right next door to you? Has that been discussed? How are the kids gonna react to that? My son smacks his head and goes crazy with noise. Do you guys know this? No, you don't. You can't possibly. But you know you have special needs kids, and mine's one of them, and these are the things you guys choose to ignore, and you make a decision that you've been trying to do for years. And we were told by Ms. Padilla that we weren't gonna be doing this when we had the meeting that you know we had last year, when you tried to do it then. Five of you knew this had already happened. You already knew, yet very, very sly, very sneakily, at 11:38 in the night, you did this. So I'm asking you, let's do it the right way, include the community, and then move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosa Sandoval?
Buenas tardes a todos. El día de hoy estoy aquí para dejarles saber mi enojo, mi desacuerdo, y mi miedo.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to let you guys know I'm upset and to let you know why.
Al enterarme que la escuela militar de Saudis va a estar en la misma instalación de John Glenn...
To let you guys know that the school...
Sí.
To let you guys know that the Southeast Academy is gonna be in the same school as John Glenn.
Me sentí verdaderamente discriminada, por lo cual nadie se tomó el tiempo para avisarme que esto sucedería el próximo año.
That the... I'm sorry. That she's felt discriminated against, that nobody took the time to inform her that this was gonna happen the next school year.
Mi molestia es demasiada por ser madre de una niña con necesidades especiales.
She's upset that her student with special needs is not gonna be taken into consideration.
Nunca estoy enterada de lo que pasa en la escuela ni de las actividades que hacen en la misma escuela, y esto me refiero a John Glenn.
She doesn't... That she's never... Nobody ever tells her about anything that's going on in the school with the activities.
Sé que mi hija está en un programa diferente de educación general.
She knows that her daughter is in programs different for education.
Del cual ustedes quisieron poner en John Glenn, sin tomar en cuenta los padres si estuvieran de acuerdo o no.
Without you guys giving into consideration with the parents from John Glenn.
Así como lo están haciendo con Saudis, de no tomar en cuenta ni a los padres ni a los alumnos.
Just like you guys are doing with Southeast, with the parents and the students.
Quiero que sepan que estoy en desacuerdo con dicha decisión.
I want you to know that I am not happy with this decision.
Primero cuando mi hija salió de la high school, todos estaban ahí diciendo que que inscribieran a mi hija en el programa de Norwalk.
I'm sorry, I'm just nervous. I want you to know that when my daughter came out, they all told me to put her in the same district as my daughter.
Y estando adentro, solo el maestro es el que tiene contacto conmigo.
And putting her in there, only the teacher is the one that has...
Contacto conmigo.
Yes. Contact with her.
Porque ni siquiera ya quieren tener una IP conmigo.
Because they don't even want to have an IP with her.
Me mandan solamente el reporte por correo.
They only sent her a report by mail.
También tengo mucho miedo por la reacción de mi hija, lo que ella vaya a sentir cuando cambien a Saudis, a la escuela.
She's also worried how her daughter is gonna react to this change.
Al verla a los otros estudiantes gritando, tocando la trompeta, o haciendo sus servicios militares.
How this reaction with the kids screaming or having the loud noise with the military?
Si algo de esto llega a afectar su salud emocional.
If any of this is emotional towards her.
Iré contra el distrito.
She will be against the district.
Mi hija es muy sensible a sonidos fuertes y a gritos.
Her daughter is very sensible with the noise or yelling.
Y hasta lo más mínimo le asusta.
And she's very scared of all the noises.
Yo sé que para mí, para ustedes, mi hija es un número más, un signo de pesos.
She knows that for you guys, her daughter is just a number.
Porque puedo ver que los estudiantes no valen en este distrito para ustedes.
Because she knows to you guys that the students are not valuable.
Pero es mi hija.
Because she is my daughter.
Y si yo tuve que pelear en una corte en Los Ángeles, también lo voy a hacer aquí.
So if she had to fight for her in the courts of LA, she'll do it here as well.
Thank you to all. Gracias a todos. Is... Are there any online comments?
We do not have any online comments this evening.
Okay. At this time, our employee and PTA representatives will be giving the report. There will be no PTA report, but we will be hearing first from Ms. Martha Jauri for the California School Employees Association.
Good evening, President Brassov, Dr. Consio, Dr. Baker, Board members, guests, and everybody on YouTube this evening. My message is very, very simple today. Just very happy that we have accomplished another school year. We've had a roller coaster up and down, and we have, you know, taken care of a lot of outstanding items that we've had, working collaboratively with different leadership, different departments, and of course, with some of you Board members. I want to thank you, Mr. Brassov and Dr. Consio for meeting with me last week, and also Dr. Gatto for, you know, working collaboratively and working together in a process that I have been dealing with for a while. But I am very happy that my membership is moving forward and that work is getting done, and looking forward to many more of these collaborations and meetings with district leadership. Want to wish everybody a restful summer. For the July 23rd board meeting, CSA will not be here. I will be at conference that week, so I will not have anybody presenting a report. So I'm just letting you know in advance that there will be no report presented through CSA, but I will be resuming back in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, the TANLA Teacher Association of Norwalk-Lamarada will be giving a report, I believe virtually, Ms. Maureen Kidoskay. Can you hear us, Ms. Gray? President Brassov, I believe she is on. Maureen, can you hear us? We can work to see if we can get her, because I believe she is in the room right now, but she can't hear us. She's attempting to speak right now and can't... We can't hear her, so she is trying to speak right now.
Well, Chris, we'll just have her speak on the mic from my phone.
There you go.
Okay, go ahead, Maureen.
Good evening, President, Mr. Brassov, Vice President Consio, Dr. Consio, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Natasha Baker, administrators, colleagues, and guests. I want to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation to all of you on the school board for listening to the concerns raised by TANLA's bargaining team during the last four meetings. Your willingness to hear our voices and acknowledge our challenges made a difference, and that is how we were able to reach a fair and collaborative tentative agreement. Even better, I'm proud to announce that our membership has officially ratified the agreement last week. This agreement is the result of many hours of work and negotiations. I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Baker, Dr. Gatto, Mr. Mike Garcia, Mr. Santillán, and the entire district bargaining team for engaging in thoughtful dialogue and for helping us find common ground. We appreciate the district's commitment to investing in its teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, and other certificate staff who show up every day to support and educate the students of Norwalk-Lamarada. This agreement is a step in the right direction, and we hope it sets a tone for continued partnership moving toward a stronger, more united district, one where our educators are supported and valued and our students are prioritized. I also want to take a moment to recognize our incredible TANLA bargaining team. These educators have given countless hours, given up valuable time with their students as well as time outside of their workday, writing lesson plans, giving up evenings, and even part of their summer break. as well as time outside of their workday, writing lesson plans, giving up evenings, and even part of their summer break, advocating for not only fair compensation, but better and fair working conditions and professional respect for all our members. Their persistence, professionalism, dedication, and focus were unwavering throughout the entire process, and I especially want to commend our bargaining chair, Amanda Kogan, whose leadership, persistence, strength, commitment, and tireless advocacy have played a pivotal role in the success of the outcome. Lastly, I want to thank our TANLA members for their solidarity and willingness to stand united in support of our efforts. Their collective voice is what makes real progress possible, and I'm proud to represent such a dedicated and passionate group of professionals. Caring Beyond the Classroom. Looking ahead, we are thrilled to be hosting our 11th Annual Caring Beyond the Classroom Event on Friday, August 9th, from 8:30 to 10:30. This will once again be a drive-through event at John Glenn High School, where we will provide backpacks filled with school supplies to our NLM USD students and families. Our team has already begun purchasing supplies and preparing for the event, but we are still in need of sponsorships and donations. So if any of you would like to donate to support this meaningful cause, please contact me. I know some of you have done so already. Also, if you're available to volunteer for the event or for the packing day on Tuesday, August 5th, please let me know. Your help is always appreciated, and we hope to see you at the event. In closing, as many of our TANLA members are now on summer break, I hope they are taking a well-earned time to relax, rest, and recharge. They deserve it. Thank you once again for your partnership and continued support. Have a wonderful evening and a fantastic summer, and this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. At this time, we will want to board discussion. Dr. Consio, we'd like to initiate a board discussion regarding Board of Trustee expenses.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a written statement. Colleagues, I'd like to request that we temporarily reconsider our current Board of Education stipend of $400 a month per board member. And I believe this discussion is timely, this discussion is necessary, and most importantly, it's symbolic. We're currently in a period of financial strain as a district, and we're making very difficult budget decisions, we're tightening resources in different programs and school sites, and we're asking teachers, classified staff, administrators, and community to do more with less. And all this while maintaining the high standard of education our students deserve. So in this context, I think it's a worthy reflection on how we, as board members, show our solidarity and shared responsibility with those on the front lines of our school systems. So I just want to be clear. I understand the stipend is optional, and I could individually choose not to accept it. But I also believe that symbolic gestures lose meaning when they're done in isolation. And this is really not about grandstanding. It's about showing the community that we are united and strife and committed to being part of the solution and not separate from it. I also want to underscore that sitting on this board is, at its core, a volunteer role, a labor of love. And so none of us ran for this position for compensation, or at least I hope none of us did, because it's $400 a month. But I think, you know, we ran because we deeply care about the district, we deeply care about our students, and we deeply care about our employees. And so personally, my heart is with our staff, those who are navigating budget cuts, larger workloads, and most importantly, uncertainty. So for me, it no longer feels right to accept compensation while we ask others to carry heavier burdens. And so that said, I'm not asking or expecting any member of the board to follow my personal choice. I'm only asking that we have the conversation openly, and we have this conversation together, so that we could consider what message we send to our community, and whether this is an opportunity to demonstrate alignment, to demonstrate sacrifice, and to demonstrate shared purpose. So thank you for your consideration. I hope that we have a respectful and thorough discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Consio. Any board members like to participate? Go ahead, Dr. Vedavi.
Thank you, President Brasov. Thank you, Dr. Consio, for sharing your thoughts. I understand that we are in a difficult financial situation, the strain, like you mentioned. And I feel like that I've already saved the district $8,000 these last two years, and will probably save the district another $10,000 in the next two years that I'm serving on the board. Because the district also extends to us $5,000 annually for conferences, meal, and travel. And if I remember correctly, and we have Mr. Estuardo here and Ms. Sky, of those $5,000 annually, I have requested reimbursement for only $1,000 for the conferences for the last two years. And I have not traveled and I have not requested, of course, reimbursements. I do not plan to request reimbursement for $5,000 this year and next year. And so I feel that I am already contributing in that sense by not spending those funds, which are actually $5,000 a year is more than the $4,800. And so I think that I am already contributing as much as I can in that way. And I mean, perhaps I can propose that we perhaps give up the $5,000 for these expenses instead of the $4,000. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Well, it is unclear exactly when the first stipends for school board services were established. Historically, these positions were voluntary, rooted in a strong sense of civic duty. And I don't believe any of us pursued this role for the $400 stipend, which comes out to about $360 after taxes. However, as the responsibilities of school board members have increased, such as overseeing budgets, setting policy, and evaluating superintendent performance, some districts began offering stipends to acknowledge the significant time and effort involved. These stipends are typically modest and meant as a token of appreciation rather than compensation. So for the past 30 years, the stipend here at Norwalk-Lamarada has not changed. Board service often requires countless hours spent attending meetings, reviewing policies and budgets, so it's an acknowledgement of time and responsibilities. The California School Board Association, CSBA, supports providing stipends, particularly as board service has grown more complex. California law allows districts to get stipends. Modernized the 40-year-old stipend standards for school and county board members. Our current policy allows individual members to decline their stipend if they choose so. As for me, I use my stipend to give back to the community, whether it's for students by purchasing gift cards or snacks for clubs or community organizations. And I'll continue to do so, but I'll also continue to give my own, to give up my own resources. So if I decline the stipend, I may be hurting these clubs, associations, because I have my own full-time job, my husband works as well. We also have children, and I have college-age children that I'm paying for right now. One of them is gonna be starting law school this next fall, but I also have my own student loans. So my budget can be very tight, depending on the month, right? Sometimes we have good months and other times it's not as good. But this stipend allows me that flexibility to give back. So I believe I would be hurting these clubs and students if I decline that stipend and I don't give it right back. That's all I have to say for me.
Thank you.
With all due respect to Dr. Consio's request, yearly I donate mostly all of my stipend to different programs. And sometimes we don't discuss them, we don't tell you guys what we do with our monies, but we do give back. I've given back to the migrant program every year. I give back to TANLA for the Caring Beyond the Classroom. So most of the monies that I do get goes back, and I like the anatomy of being able to do it on my own. And I would wish to keep it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Vias?
Yes. I give up, or I give more than what my stipend is. Just Christmas alone, within the school district, I give over $6,000 in toys to different schools. That's more than the stipend it is, my yearly stipend. Among that, PTA, different events, they got the Halloween event, you got different, the spring festivals. I provide and I pay for their entertainment. I pay for candies they need. I mean, it allows me to give a little extra the one I can. And I'm thankful that, and blessed that I can give out of my pocket. But this is a little extra that goes out to the kids. The backpack giveaways that we do with the free haircuts. Who pays for those? Obviously, I have to do. I also pay sometimes for the haircuts. Because not everybody pays for free, although some of our alliances that we create within the community give up their time, give their space. They lose business that day because they're taking nothing but our students. But I have to compensate them with something. Maybe just their lunch or their meal or whatever it is, but it comes out of my pocket. So I think the stipend just helps me give a little bit more, and I would like to stay, remain.
Just that. Thank you. Ms. Ling Walter, go.
Yeah, I just want to actually really commend you, Dr. Consio, for having it in your heart to do that, you know, to the idea of giving with joy. I've been at, what are they called, PTA events with the surprise gift raffles and seen you give generously, like writing a $250 check for a basket or two. I know you are actually, I mean, I just happen to have been present when you've done the giving. I know my colleagues give as well, and I really respect that and respect that you're doing it out of joy. And, you know, whatever you desire in your heart to give. At the same time, I have to admit, I'm gonna be honest. I mean, I have spent thousands of dollars in a campaign, and I do support a lot of our organization's school events and things like that on my own. But I actually, I enjoy getting that stipend. It's like a tangible thank you. And I try to repay in being present, really paying attention to the issues that we have and looking for efficiencies. And so I respectfully want to decline foregoing that stipend, but I think it is, it is a nice gesture. Gestures do mean things to people. It certainly means something to me. Not that I'm not supporting financially, but I hope that doesn't detract from whatever you decide to do, because I do respect that spirit of generosity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. Sure. Yeah, I thank you. Once again, yeah, I want to commend the spirit of generosity and the heart. I recognize the heart that this is coming from, right? It's not a heart of grandstanding, it's a heart of wanting to, solidarity. I did want to answer my colleague's question of when stipends came to be a thing. California ed code started it in 1976. So since '76, districts with under $25,000 can get $400. I believe there was a period of time where we were over $25,000, but in the early '90s, we went down, we dipped under $25,000. So then it went from $750 to $400. The ed code also allows 5% increase per year. So if you do the compound interest formula for 30 years, $400, 5% every year, we would be at $1,728 right now. If we had given ourselves a stipend allowable by the ed code, we'd be getting $1728 per month. But we have forgotten, we have not given ourselves what was allowable for 30 years. So I do feel that there's a, you know, the solidarity in that we don't do that. Also, many districts, Seritas College does this, others have a matching policy, where whatever the labor partners get, just like the admin gets it, also the Board of Education does, but ours is capped at 5%. So if labor partners get six, the statute caps it at five. But I think, I would like to also reiterate something Dr. Vedavi said. I think perhaps a tangible thing we can do is look at the $5,000 annually and say, well, first of all, has that been met by most of us? I don't think any of us have asked for anywhere near that. But I think it might be good, since it's probably not a realistic number anyway. I mean, I don't think, I, any of us has gone maybe over $2,000 for the whole year or less. $1,000, I mean, we go to a conference in December and every, rarely some other event, but very rare. It might be a good idea to take a look at that. I'd be willing to accept, you know, we don't have to stay at the... There's more modest accommodations at the conferences that would be okay too. So I think that would be a proactive thing we could do. Perhaps look at it in a different, in a policy meeting to look at the, is that a realistic number anyway? Can we go down on that? Can we, you know, what can we do in terms of the conference? Because that's really, really comes out to the December conference. But perhaps that can be, that's, might be a more targeted approach that actually hopefully would get better, better results. But I also want to avoid sending the other message, and I know this is, because I know your heart, this is not the message you want to send at all, of the message that what you do as a board member doesn't matter, therefore, we're not gonna pay. You know, we don't ask teachers to work for free, we don't ask others to work for free, because we know what they do matters. And so I believe showing the value that we're not just here to warm a seat in rubber stamp, we're here to look and diligently guide the district and the superintendent. I believe the modest stipend is appropriate, but I think taking a look at the $5,000 reimbursement amount could be a fruitful discussion.
So first I want to preface this by, this is not meant to be a contentious topic or issue. We haven't had this discussion, I think, ever, not just our current board, but like, I don't recall in any of the board meetings in a very, very long time ever having this discussion. So it's important to have this discussion just because it is dire times. And, you know, we've been having a long conversation with Mr. Santillán about our deficit. And it's been, it's been ongoing. I know that the Office of the Superintendent has been working very diligently to help address that deficit. And so I was considering it as a potential topic, a way for us, like I said, to show solidarity with the rest of the community. So for me, like, it's difficult knowing, like, the, for example, like, cutting crossguards, right? The amount that allotted for a cost, sorry, for a crossguard is really close to like a board stipend. And so for me, knowing that that's happening and thinking like, okay, now some location may or may not have a crossing guard is problematic. But the way I think about the stipend is, so, my colleagues correct, so we receive around $360 a month, but we're taxed on it, so we're taxed on $40. That's $40 that just goes back to the government. But if we don't take that stipend and we give it back to the district, the district would receive the full $400. So if I'm donating $360, that's great, but I think it'd be even greater if we could donate $400. But, you know, I really, I really liked what you said, Dr. Vedari, about our transportation stipend, because I don't recall anyone ever going above two grand a year, or yeah, or even less. And so while I would personally like, actually, I'd like to make a motion, but while I would personally like to formally request that my stipend be redirected and it be rotated across all school sites on a monthly basis and to be used as discretionary funds for principals. And we could start bottom up with our elementary schools. And hopefully, we could recognize accepting the stipend is just, again, an option. So, Mr. Santiano, please let me know any logistical steps that are necessary or what I need to do or sign. But I would personally like to give up my stipend. And I'd like for it to go from the 360 to full 400 to our school sites. But I'd like to make a motion.
Sorry, the problem is that it's not an action item right here. It's a board discussion. But I think we can also come to consensus for a future. I think that is an appropriate thing to say, there's a consensus to bring this up at a future time. Is there something we would like to bring up at a future time for, to a Gendays?
Yes, that would be foregoing the full 5,000 for the conference meal travel.
Okay, so I think that would be an appropriate item for a, for a policy subcommittee meeting or perhaps a full meeting. And I think it's realistic anyway because I don't think any of us have gone anywhere near. But maybe in years past, I think the number was raised in years past because some board members did go near. But none of us have for quite a while, so.
If, if I may, the, these 5,000 includes, you know, sometimes the small conferences that you go to, but it also includes the CSBA trainings. Now, it doesn't happen every single year, but then it does. Those monies come from somewhere. And then the only reason why it's been identified as a 5,000 allocation, I mean, we can reduce it anytime we want. But, okay, but if somebody needs some kind of training, then this will have to pay for your training. And that's why this one is allocated that way. Now, from the 5,000, I mean, we can probably make it 4,000, 3,000, you know, because there are certain functions that you would have to go that had to be sponsored by the district. And so I just wanted to share that piece.
The 4,000 then, right, 4,000 then.
Thank you for clarifying that the trainings come from this as well.
Just a comment, we thank you for bringing it up because it is an opportunity for the citizens to know how much we really take. Because for many years, I've been here almost seven years. Sometimes they have a misconception that we're making thousands of dollars and we're not. 400 is what we take. And we do it because we care, not because of the money. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. Any concluding thoughts, Dr. Consio?
So I'm good, right? We could have that discussion later, Mr. Santiano. And then hopefully we could put it on the board. Again, I really like your proposal, Dr. Vedari.
Well, the assumption that is bringing it down to 4,000. Now, when I bring my savings package for next year, then I'll be bringing 2,000, 14,000 reduction at the conference level for the board members. So that will be one item. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's not an action item, but I think that's, for example, where the savings package that would come on, if that's what we do, we can, we can discuss that when it I just want to be careful not to step onto things that aren't exactly Gendays. But if that's one way to do it, you know, then we can discuss it as part of the savings package. Or, or we could have a policy, since this is board policy, Board Bylaw 9250, perhaps we can discuss it as part of a policy committee.
Sure, the purpose will have to be modified. But then when you actually see it, we'll be going to bring you money of the total cuts and it'll be 2,000, 2,000 per board member. So there'll be 4,000 less of savings.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Consio. This brings us to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. We have reached our final board meeting of the 2425 school year. We're super excited because tonight you're going to hear about our budget. You're also going to hear about our LCAP. July is a really important month because it's a time for staff to take some time off and to rest and rejuvenate, but it's also planning time. So we have some opportunities during the month of July for all of our district level leaders to come together to plan for next year. And then we're bringing back our district leaders with our principals to do some planning. We'll also connect with our labor partners, really thankful for Ms. Martha Hadigee for her collaborative effort throughout the year. It's not an easy job, but we're excited that you're a partner in this work and that's going to only increase for next year. So thank you for all that you do. So we are super excited about, you know, preparing for next year. I do want to acknowledge, you heard of some updates from the folks who are joining our team. We're super excited about that and some of them acknowledge their families. And many of you know my story. My parents are both deceased. But tonight, in our final board meeting, I had an opportunity for, you wouldn't believe, two of my former high school teachers and coaches decide to join. Mr. and Mrs. S., can you guys please stand up? Please, please remain standing. Because I know when we talk about supporting students, these are folks who exemplify that. Mrs. S. used to pick me up at 5:30 in the morning when I was a high school student because my mom didn't have a car. And she tutored me in math when I went to college at Long Beach State. She took me to my dorm room. And so when you say that, you know, kids need support, and I had no idea they were going to show up tonight, but it's our last meeting and I just want you guys to know when we say that our kids need parent involvement and support, not everybody has the parents who can do what some of you all are able to do as parents. But we have teachers and coaches. And I was just so excited. I love you guys so much for being in my life. And thank you for coming. I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr., Dr. Baker, can we have a picture up front with your coaches and teachers? If, we'll scoot out of the way so that you guys can come with that in the background. Thank you. This brings us to the Educational Services presentation, the LCAP. I believe, Ms. Santana? Oh, and Dr. Sanchez.
And triple Dr. Wood.
Yes.
Good evening, President Brashov, Vice President Consio, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Baker, guests here and listening online. My name is Dr. Marco Sanchez. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for TK-12. With me this evening is Ms. Michelle Santana, who's the Director of Federal and State Programs. And together we'll be providing a day two of our LCAP presentation. Last time we mentioned that we would be with you this evening to kind of present more detailed data. That thanks to the state being able to expedite that so quickly, we're able to review for the first time this early in the school year. So we're excited to share that with you today. In addition to that, we also have to present local indicators that Ms. Michelle Santana will be doing. And then I'll review very briefly the slides from last time just to kind of set context for this evening and then dive into the disaggregated data. Okay, so I'm going to introduce Ms. Michelle Santana, who's going to briefly go over our local indicators.
That's what happens when you have taller, shorter. Good evening, President Brashov, Vice President Dr. Consio, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Baker, members of Executive Cabinet, and also to all of our esteemed guests who are here and listening online. So we will begin with just, we'll maybe begin, here we go, with a brief overview of the local indicator reports. So this is something that we do annually because it is part of the LCAP process. So as you know, every district's LCAP plan has to have goals that do address the eight state priorities that you see on the right. And those eight state priorities, they do fall under three umbrellas, if you will. And so the umbrellas are conditions of learning, student outcomes, as well as engagement. So there are three priorities that you see up there that have a, they have no blue circle around them. And those are, I wish I had brought my glasses, student engagement, as well as other student outcomes and student achievement. So these three priorities are priorities that the state of California collects information on from every single school district and reports it on the dashboard. The remaining five that you see here with the blue circles, these are priorities also reported on the dashboard, but the state does not themselves collect that data. They rely on school districts to self-report on each of these five priorities. School climate, basic necessities, implementation of state standards, access to courses, and also parental involvement. So these five, because districts collect the data and then report to the state annually, these are considered local indicators. Again, all eight are part of the state priorities and they are reported on the dashboard. So we will take a look now at the next slide. Here you'll see how our district reported on the local indicator report. So here on this slide, what you see on the left-hand side are the priorities that are local indicators. Meaning again, we collect the data, we self-report to the California dashboard. Every district does use the same state Board of Education-approved template to report their findings. You can also see that in the middle, there are metrics for each of the five local indicators. And I'm proud to report that we did meet each of these five local indicators. So there are three different scores, if you will. Met, not met, and not met for two or more years. So even though I feel we exceed met, right? I feel we go above and beyond. The highest score that we can report on the local indicator is met. We're going to take a look at this a little differently now, from a different angle. So what you'll see on this table, on the left-hand side, you'll see our five LCAP goals. So Norwalk-Lamarada's current LCAP goals. And in the middle, you'll see which state priorities each goal addresses. If you see a priority that's highlighted in blue, that means it's a local indicator. So again, these are the areas we self-report in annually. And then you'll see, for example, Goal One, Providing a Safe, Engaging, and Responsive Climate, addressing priorities, state priorities, 1, 5, and 6. You'll see an allocation. We have two different numbers here, one in black and one in red. So what that means is that overall, for Goal Number One, we spend almost $25 million of our LCAP funds to meet all of the actions for Goal Number One. However, there is one action within Goal One, and it's Action 1.5. Action 1.5 is an action on classroom environments and school facilities that support learning. This particular action is paid for, if you think back to two weeks ago, we talked about local control funding formula. That's the funding for the LCAP plan. We have base funding that we receive for every student. Well, we have this action, 1.5 Classroom Environments, that's paid for with base funding. So if we remove the cost of that particular action, then what you see is the number in red, the almost $7 million. The $7 million that you see here basically are funds that are used to go above and beyond and support our students that we call unduplicated pupils, which means that they are either English language learners, low-income students, or foster youth. Goal Number Two, again, you see our LCAP goal, Access to Rigorous Instruction. You see the state priorities that it covers. And again, you'll see similar. So we have almost $49 million here. But we do have one particular action in Goal Two, and that's 2.18, Purchasing Standards-Aligned Textbooks. If we remove the cost of that because it comes out of base, then what you see remaining, the 32, almost 33 million, is supplemental and concentration funds. Goal Number Three, Exemplary Staff, again, covers state priorities 1, 2, and 4. You can see there is a lot of exemplary staff, both classified and certificated, that we pay for using base LCFF funds. So it's almost $71 million. But if we remove the cost of many of our staff members, we're left with about 2.2 million. For Goal Four, Family and Community Engagement, that is, you know, it comes out of supplemental and concentration. There is no difference there. But I do want to highlight that for Goal Number Five, Equity Multiplier, which is only for El Camino High School. These funds, even though we have to have a goal in our LCAP plan, these funds are considered other state funds, not LCFF funds. But we still have to put a goal in there. So that is a very brief, you know, bird's eye view level of the local indicator reports that we will be submitting to the California dashboard. And you will see the report, the dashboard, in its entirety covering all eight priorities around the fall. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sanchez.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Before I go on, I just want to really briefly mention that the data you're about to see is data that we shared with our principals during our last principal meeting of the year, which was on June 12th. And what we shared with them that day is something I'll echo here. Is that data, it is our core belief that data is intended solely to shine a light on what's effective and really to point to our teams, both at the site and at the district office, that we celebrate things that are working well and also just use data to reflect on what isn't working because it can be very frustrating, frustrating to work as hard as everyone across our district works and have the results at times that aren't desirable. So that's the first thing I want to make sure that I point out. We never intend to use data to weaponize and make anyone feel bad about, you know, results. But at the same time, again, we have an obligation to our students and our families to make sure we try our best and that's reflected, again, in our core beliefs. I also want to just remind everybody that every single data point that's a 2425 projection will likely change because of the business rules that I mentioned during our last meeting. So if in the fall, you see those numbers change, it's due to that, right? Right now, it's solely projection. So just, I want to caution both the board and anyone listening of that. Right now, it's solely projection, so just, I, I want to caution, uh, both the board and, uh, anyone listening, uh, of that. I am going to literally fly through last presentation, just real briefly, just to set context, especially for people listening in who did not attend. We will be posting this presentation. Um, so Michelle just reviewed our LCAP goals. The pattern that we followed for all of the metrics that we reported on was to identify the goal, identify key findings in the, um, data that we shared, and also try to marry the LCAP actions that we felt contributed to those outcomes. And we did so pretty much for chronic absenteeism, uh, suspension rates. We did briefly share suspension rates, um, for the district. This is the only metric that we will not be disaggregating by school. And the reason that is, is because some sites have such a small number of suspensions, um, that I followed the same practice that the state follows, which anytime there's out, uh, results that are 11 or fewer students, they don't post it, uh, just to preserve confidentiality. Um, and so this is the only one that we will not be reviewing in that manner. Uh, we, again, every single one of these slides, we covered last time. We reviewed SEO and Core Data, we identified next steps, uh, we did CASP data in ELA and math, um, also reviewed briefly graduation rates, uh, science achievement, um, early childhood achievement. And, um, we did not cover this one, but I want to just briefly, uh, mention to, uh, to the board that the College and Career Readiness Indicator is something we're going to try to review, uh, for, for data points prior to this year. This is the one data point where we're unable to do projections because it's such a complex metric, and I'll explain more in, in just a few minutes. But these are the LCAP actions that we feel contribute to the outcomes and the College and Career Readiness Indicator. We reviewed EL reclass data in the same format, um, reviewed GO4, and then also briefly touched upon Equity Multiplier for El Camino. And so now, we're going to review about 75 slides that have disaggregated data. Um, and just in the interest of time, um, I'm going to try to review them as efficiently as possible. And I'm sure that the school board will, um, uh, ask questions, um, either throughout the session or throughout the presentation or at the end. Um, so just feel free to, uh, let me know what you prefer. So again, this is the chronic absenteeism data that we reviewed for, uh, the district. What you did not get to see last time is the data disaggregated by school. And what you'll see from either the Norwalk family, the John Glenn family, or the Lamarada family, is that chronic absenteeism is, uh, going up for certain sites and going down for others. Um, there's a total of 21 sites that have chronic absenteeism data. Just to remind the board that we only collect, uh, or, or we only report chronic absenteeism data for students in grades up to, uh, grade eight. And so that's why there's only 21 schools, 16 elementary and five middle, for a total of 21. Um, and the emerging theme here is that 10 of our schools showed decreases in chronic absenteeism. And again, that's a positive thing because we want fewer students that are chronically absent. However, 11, uh, schools did increase. And because the district, uh, results, um, are overall decreasing, um, or rather increasing, that means that the 11 schools that, uh, worsened attendance outweighed, right, the, uh, the schools that improved attendance, pretty much. Um, the projection's roughly about 2%. So as the district, um, we will be obviously reporting that, and, and these are projections, but we're pretty certain that, um, there will be, uh, a projected increase in chronic absenteeism, simply because that number is so large that even after the business rules apply, uh, we still, we're going to see some increases in chronic absenteeism. Next up is the SEO Student Core, uh, SEO Core Data, sorry. Um, last time, we reported that overall elementary students indicated that there was a, a worsening sense of belonging, and the data indicates that. This here shows you, I'm going to briefly explain this. Um, the first column, 2024, shows the percentage of students who, um, overall have a positive sense of belonging. And that N equal to 2,000, uh, 200, rather, for, uh, the first school there is the number of students that took the survey in each respective year. And the last column is the change of year over year. And as you can see from the third column, there are some schools who did experience, um, big decreases in the sense of belonging, and that's obviously something that, um, as a principal of that school site, and also from us here at the district office, it is concerning. We, we definitely want to identify what created those, what factors contributed to students feeling that way. Although there's fewer students taking it, there's still a substantial drop that I think outweighs that. Um, and one of the things that you'll hear me say quite often is that, although we're trying to report data through the informative lens, at the same time, we believe that our principals, together with their site leadership team, obviously is charged with leading their school site with our support. Um, and so we never want to make sites feel like we're leading in a top-down fashion. We, we want to create an environment where people all contribute to solutions, and our principals and their school site leadership teams are a primary, uh, driving factor in that. Um, obviously, again, with our support here at the central office. However, um, we do believe, not just in the PLC model, where teacher teams work together to address the issues they face instructionally. Um, but with this, uh, our site principals are obviously going to be using this data to now do either summer planning or early fall planning for changing some of these metrics.
A quick question, really quick, on the chronic absenteeism, and we see that the trend is that it's going to continue to go up. Uh, do we already have, uh, something that we're working on to make sure we tackle that, uh, ahead of time, so that we can begin working with these families? So that we rather see a declining, uh, uh, number than one that is increasing?
So obviously, Mr. Moulton and his, uh, team monitor this centrally, and, and we report this out to school intermittently throughout the year. Um, part of what we want to do is not rest of judgment, so we definitely want to do a deeper dive in data. Um, we try to analyze data through multiple metrics. And what I mean by that is, if students are absent, there are various reasons that create those absences. And it takes that deep dive and, and, uh, personal human, uh, human contact to really identify what created those things. Our counselors do a phenomenal job, and other staff members throughout the year, principals, teachers, uh, ESSs and various other positions, they try to create that anecdotally, but we try to do a more strategic analysis here at the district office, where then, um, after that analysis is done, we share it, um, early fall with them. And then they, in turn, take it back to their school sites to do, uh, that action planning at their school site.
Thank you.
I guess in relation to that, uh, Dr. Sanchez, I know correlation is not signified causation, and emerging themes is a deeper dive, but from an analytical point of view, were there any correlations that you think would probably, uh, give us directionality when it comes to some of these emerging themes? I know, so I guess the way I'm thinking about it is it may be like possible themes across the families or, um, or overall? So just, just general, because I think it does go to my colleague's question on, what are potential strategies that, that the Office of the Superintendent are already considering, um, given maybe that soft core analysis at the surface?
Just having been a, a site principal and a teacher, uh, just anecdotally from the practitioner standpoint, obviously, attendance is usually created by common themes, like sometimes there's mental health needs that, uh, students face. There's personal issues in the household that, that create that. Um, either parents are struggling to pay the bills, no one can take the child to school. Um, it's usually things like that. Um, again, that's, that analysis has to be done more on an individual basis. So what we do is we create, um, rosters. For example, um, we create rosters that tell people, these are the students who are doing high, they, they have high achievement but high absences. That group of students will have an entirely different approach than a student who has poor achievement and historical poor achievement and historical, uh, poor attendance. The needs of those two groups, as basic as that seems, is, is radically different. And so that's the type of analysis that we have to do, uh, in order for our solutions to be a little bit more strategic.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
And also, uh, any demographic analysis as to, uh, whether it's race or socioeconomic status? Uh, if those are play factors in this, um, like, uh, you know, for example, if, if I, this probably doesn't include summer school, but I can imagine with the recent, um, law enforcement activity, uh, our, you know, our numbers might be affected in terms of, uh, of, uh, attendance. So it would be good to, uh, kind of analyze all those factors, and if there's a sense of fear of, uh, of leaving the house, of coming to school, and how we can be supportive of that.
Thank you for mentioning that, uh, uh, Mr. Brashoff, but this data only includes up to the end of April. Um, May is actually not included in here, but absolutely, that, that's definitely something we're looking to do, um, in the fall as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, just to follow up with this, um, sense of belonging, um, increased at the secondary level, decreased at the elementary level. Uh, however, the positive piece that I showed, shared last time is that, uh, safety data went up across, uh, both levels for the most part. There are some sites, obviously, has, uh, experienced just slight decreases. But that's a, that's one of the positive outcomes of the, the second piece of the data. A positive or negative, again, our schools are, are going to be charged with identifying root causes of these issues and, um, establishing action plans as they collaborate with their, uh, site-based stakeholders. All right. Now, English Language Arts disaggregated by school site. Um, last time, we briefly just showed this. Um, there is a modification. This is one of the, uh, slides that I just have revised from our meeting on the ninth. I had reported then that there was, uh, eight schools, um, that had decreased, three, um, that had stayed the same in 14, that had increased. So since then, additional data has come up, and so, uh, we actually moved to nine, um, instead of eight. And, and likewise with the staying the same. And so now I'll go over the analysis by school site. And so I know this is, um, busy. However, uh, our goal is to provide as much data as possible, just to kind of understand historical, uh, trends. Um, and so that's kind of why this, this specific slide, elementary, because we have 16 school sites, um, is a little difficult to, to present, um, with, uh, larger text, so I do apologize for that. Um, part of what you're going to see here is that we did experience, um, some sites, I know, Mr. Counselor, you were one of the one, Dr. Counselor, sorry. Um, you asked last time, who were the schools who had double-digit gains? And, um, here you can see that Glazier is one of those school sites, uh, that had a 15% increase in ELA. Um, and so we definitely want to highlight, uh, those large gains. And, and there's a lot of other schools that do celebrate, um, not necessarily double-digit gains, but they still have, you know, high single-digit gains. Um, and so this is the elementary. I'll move on to middle school in ELA, then high school. Overall, the district as a whole went up in ELA, at least that's the projection right now. Um, like any other data point you're going to see today, there's going to be schools who show gains and other schools that show, um, declines. Um, in either case, again, just sticking to that core belief of feed that information into, uh, different groups, including our site leadership teams at the site level, and have them, they know best the factors that contributed to a lot of this. Um, th- they are obviously working in conjunction with us at the central office. Uh, but the goal is going to be to primarily have them, um, steward this process, that analysis at the school site, right? Um, I'm going to move on now. In addition to presenting today, ELA results at each level for all students, we are also providing results, uh, by level, by school for EL subgroups. This is the EL elementary subgroup. I do want to point out that the, uh, tables or graphs that are missing data is not, uh, an error, although I'm sure errors will exist and we'll identify and fix them. Uh, but that itself is not an error. If it is blank, that means that there's either not enough students on the campus that year to generate a percentage. Uh, it's not a significant subgroup. And just briefly, a significant subgroup is having 30 or more students on the school site that, that meet that criteria. Or if there is a significant subgroup, but only 11 results are there, then the state doesn't publish that data, right? What's different than that, a blank versus a zero, means that there was data available and 0% of students met exceeded the standard. So I want to just highlight that difference. This is the elementary results. These are the middle school results for ELs and English Language Arts by school site. And this is the high school, um, English Language Arts results, uh, for ELs.
I'm sorry, just to understand, these are the students that recasified or?
No, these, these are the percentage of students who met exceeded the standard on the CASP and math.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the reclass data will be later on today, uh, at the end of the presentation, sorry. If they, if they did, they had fewer than, um, they either didn't have a significant, significant subgroup, which had 30 or fewer stu- students, or if they did meet that threshold and only 11 results are available, they don't publish it. If you actually look on the, the state website, it'll tell you there are few, fewer, 11 or fewer results are available. And to protect the confidentiality of students, they don't publish that. And then after EL, we also are providing, uh, the school board and, and the public results. Again, these are percentages of met exceeded, um, by school site at the elementary level for our special education population. Okay? Again, this is elementary, this is middle school, and this is high school. Okay? So just to recap, which, what we've done in the first nine slides here for English Language Arts is we provided you the percentage of students who met exceeded the standard at each of our school sites. Either the very first three were all students on the campus, and then we disaggregated that by EL subgroup and then by special ed subgroup. Okay? I'm going to move on now to, um, Student Achievement in Mathematics, using the same format. Um, we reviewed with the school board, um, on the ninth, the district-wide results, those are still staying, um, consistent. The projected increases, decreases, or schools that are similar are still the same. And we are projected to increase as a district, um, by about, uh, 6%, almost 6%, okay? So our elementary math results by school site, um, for all students is here. These are the percentages of met exceeded by school site for the past, uh, six years.
Um, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, could you just tell me what's contributed to the, to the, uh, increase in test scores for our math?
For our math?
Yes.
Oh, that is, uh-
District-wide, yeah, that's, that's-
Yeah, yeah, that, that, um, that's obviously, uh, of, of due respect, a very loaded question, because it's hard for us to pinpoint exactly what creates these things. We definitely have, um, data that, that we feel positively contributed. Um, and it depends on, obviously, who you ask. I feel that the change in curriculum, um, had a direct impact. Although it, it was a very difficult process, and, and kudos to our amazing teachers, district-wide, elementary, middle, and high school, who have implemented new curriculum now. Uh, elementary and middle did it for one year this year. Our high school is now on year two. Um, and that's obviously changing how students learn. I was a math teacher myself, um, and like I've mentioned in the past, this new curriculum doesn't teach math like we typically learned it, which was, in essence, it was procedural, right? The teacher had a problem, they taught you how to do step one, step two, step three, all the way to the end. And as a math student myself, struggling in high school, I would just take notes and then copy what the teacher did during notes, right? I'd just take notes, and then my homework, this problem is like, which of the problems the teacher did during class, or use the book. Now, it engages students in deeper, higher levels of thinking early on in the lesson, and it doesn't allow for moments of confusion to take, to go on very, uh, long, because it forces that engagement, uh, in the learning process.
And is it a combination now of the traditional math with paper and pencil and technology? Or is it, is it less technology?
It, it's definitely more hands-on. There is a component of technology, um, that teachers use. Um, we do have, uh, learning management systems that provide lessons and, and, uh, visual activities for kids to, to kind of just understand things at a, at a deeper level. Um, what a computer can do is obviously a lot different than what a teacher can do, uh, with direct instruction. But I, I do think that, uh, the, the way that the instruction takes place now is so radically different with, uh, with math that, um, that's one of the factors I feel directly impacted. There's a lot of other factors. I don't want to sell our counselor short, who have a direct impact on how students feel and, um, motivation that they feel coming to school and, and the interventions that, our interventions also provide at the elementary level. I mean, there's a long list of factors that we could go into. Um, and again, the charge for our school principals is to take back that information to truly, truly identify, like, what is it that you feel achieved that, right? Um, I do want to really quickly, before I get to the next question, I know Dr. Consejo had asked this last time again. Um, in addition to Glazier going up 15%, uh, Garn Hill went up 10% in math, and Morrison went up 20% in math. So those are three of the four schools that went up by double digits.
Thank you. Dr. Vidare?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would like to know when and how do you engage in program improvement and how do you determine what is working and what is not?
Um, we, we for few years now have focused on, on the PLC framework that pretty much presents a simple short cycle uh to, to principals at the site, at the management level and teachers at the um, at the teacher level that pretty much says, you know, this is a problem of practice. What is it that we feel um is a true issue here? Use data to, to analyze that. And that simple framework, we feel that consistent uh application of that framework, we feel I feel strongly has um had a direct impact on how people perceive the work that they do. Um, so the short cycle or cycles of inquiry are, are something that we feel, I feel strongly uh has had a direct impact on how people do their work on their campus.
And so from the data that you've collected and in response to Ms. Free's question, what exactly then is causing, is improving these math scores? What is it?
Um, I, I, I think it's hard to pinpoint, you know, exactly what it is. I'm gonna be very honest with you. I, I I think that a lot of the things that we do have, we feel a positive impact on it. Um, but specifically the sites, obviously, there's, there's now um three elementary sites, one in ELA and two in math that, th- these are not um having a twenty percent increase in achievement doesn't happen by accident. So I think the best way for us to answer that question would be to do those deep dives on those campuses, to truly inform us, you know, like, what do they feel was, what I feel? You know, and, and oftentimes when we engage uh either our principals or our labor partners, I'm very transparent in that. I was a math teacher fourteen years ago. A lot has changed in fourteen years.
Right.
Um, I was a principal um, you know, six years ago, and I did site administration for eight years. A lot of things have changed then. I was a pre-pandemic cited man and, and I was a pre um, you know, uh, I, I only taught when students were taking CSTs. So Mr. Brassoff and anyone else who, who knows what that is, right? This is a long time ago. So it's foolish for, for me to come up here and tell you, I know exactly what it was, right?
Okay, so when was the last time that the sites did those deep dives in English Language Arts and math and science? When was the last time that the sites, when did they conduct those deep dives?
So the, part of the issue that we have, um, and I'll go back to the attendance, right? I, I mentioned earlier that the data we provide sites ten, uh, we, we want to make sure that it's rich and, and has multiple metrics. This is the first time that we have three years of data that we can give our side principals. The three, uh, if you notice, there's a gap in between, right? Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-two, twenty-three. That's because of the pandemic. And twenty, anything before twenty-two, twenty-three um pretty much had the full blueprint being taught. Now exams for the past three years have been on a modified blueprint. Right? So that's an important factor. So i- it, that has now happened for about three years where sites are doing that on a regular basis. And analyzing what their actions are leading to.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, the district provides these stats, this data to the sites to help them see that. Okay, so what is each site? What is each principal from each site providing to the district? And what is working for them and what is not there in their classrooms?
Just to name a few things um that, that they do is obviously they, it is and I don't want to go into too much detail because I, I don't want to do it injustice, but part of the, all these metrics are tied to the evaluation process for principals where um they set goals themselves. And individually with the supervisor and the principal, that's part of what I think contributes to that. Uh, we do PLC walkthroughs where what the site is claiming they're focusing on, we see and observe during the PLC walkthroughs. Um, when we visit sites, we do classroom observations. And so all those data uh, uh, metrics are, are triangulated and inform us, okay, is this something that we need to coach or provide additional training from the central office? Um, and at the same time, just trusting that sometimes achievement takes time, right? Change takes time. And you have to trust and train uh your folks uh to be able to implement something um and allowing that, that growth to take place over time.
Yeah, um, I would uh hope that they are doing this because in some of these graphs, I see downward trends. And that's alarming.
Absolutely.
Especially in the lower, especially in the lower grades.
Absolutely, yeah. And last time I did mention that, uh, Dr. Vidare, that, that our teachers are telling us through survey data, which is another data point that we use to inform our, our planning, is that there's too much testing taking place. Um, and what that data and how that data is used in the cycle that I just mentioned earlier is something that can be at times overwhelming and too time-consuming for a teacher. So it is something that we're looking at reviewing this upcoming year. Uh, because now we have enough data to prove exactly that you, like you said, if there's been year-over-year declines, um, it, it requires a little bit more intervention on our behalf to ensure that the site principals and teachers on that campus have the, the proper support.
That there, I think that it begins with the data, with the, their observations. Uh, and then reporting those upward, right?
Absolutely.
It needs to be done at the classroom level.
And Dr. V, we do have a process that we're going to be working collaboratively with school sites on around quarterly reports, instructional walks and benchmarking and assessment calendar. So all of those systems pieces around data assessment and instruction are going to be uh a part of our planning this summer and throughout the school year.
Because pretty much, we, we pretty much do not have those in place right now in the, currently.
We have it in pockets. We want it to be more cohesive across all schools so that um when we come to the board, we're talking about third grade before state testing. We know what we're doing in third grade to have impact. Right now, we can say in pockets at different schools. Um, but we want to streamline things a little bit more as best we can in collaboration with our school sites.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, because I do believe that our teachers are capable and um, yeah, well, I won't say anymore. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Vidare.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Counselor had a comment?
Yes, uh, so first, um, Dr. Sanchez, I want to thank you for memorizing all my questions from a couple of weeks ago. Um, you definitely get a gold star there. Uh, I guess in defense of this data, uh, given the fact that they're, they're cohorts, it's difficult really to capture sometimes trends because cohorts are constantly changing. Um, so they're really only snapshots, but I mean, it could give some direction when you look across the board. Um, it's just how you tabulate the, the data. Um, I mean, we see the, right in the way when it comes to ELA scores, we see an increase in science. I want to prob- probably give some props to fem ingenieurs, robotics, and coding, uh, which, which increased buy-in from our students um and participating in these programs. And which really shows that they've embraced some of these concepts and we see these increases. Uh, but for math, it's a, it's like a little funky phenomenon because we see that pre-pandemic um, like the increase. And then, and I know that there's just different types of, of um tools that were used during the pandemic that are now being used now. And I think English has been able to, or ELA has been able to embrace it. Uh, science has been able to just rock and roll it. And I think math is, is um, is having a difficult time, but it's not to its own detriment. Um, I think it probably has something to do with uh, you're trying to grapple learning loss and simultaneously trying to establish those pre-pandemic gains. And so I, you know, we have to consider the type of investment that we're giving in our math programs across the district. So I think we see this here. And so, you know, we don't want to shun any scores in some of the directions and uh Mr. Brassoff was seeing me draw the directions and in different um bars uh for respective school sites. But it clearly looks like math is probably a fogey that we want to um really think about how to be innovative. And again, maybe collectively get some of that buy-in and, and help address some of that learning loss, which, you know, we see in English um that we've been able to embrace. Um, and so, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to uh the initiatives that are introduced forward when it comes to mathematics in our district, so.
And Mr. Rios?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sanchez and everyone giving this presentation. Um, looking at the graphs here and, and then we would, uh, one of my colleagues brought up demographics within that area, um, in certain areas. If I was to be looking at Morrison and looking at Diddy Johnson, and if I go to the uh language arts and the mathematics, um, I, I just kind of question, I mean, the demographics are kind of the same within that. I mean, they're only a few blocks away. Uh, there's differences. Is it? And I, that's what I wanted to know. I mean, is there a possibility that you can look at, see what's happening at Morrison that they can either project or bring? I mean, sometimes I know we rely a lot on our, our uh principals to um do their own, bring their own goals, but maybe given some type of, hey, look, this is what they're doing is working for them. You know, i- and I just don't see that because uh, and, and the same thing, you know, um, like I said, uh, Moffett, I, I, it's, it's kind of singled out on its own. And I don't think, you know, uh, uh, there's really nothing else I can compare it to, but the others that I'm looking at, I mean, it's just a difference on, on a couple of blocks away. And well, maybe not, but maybe seven, eight blocks difference, right? And so that's what I want to, that, that's what my question is. What would that be? Why, why is there a difference there? Uh?
That's um, that's probably loaded question number two uh of the evening. Um, you know, I, I think um, having been at the site level where, you know, I, I've led both a small school and a, a big school. Every school that I've worked at, I was a site administrator at five different high schools. And every single school, it was in the same city, same everything, had radically different needs. And I know that proximity can sometimes make us think that needs are similar and that student populations are homogeneous like that, but they're rarely, rarely the same. Um, I always like to, I've shared this in, in previous presentations. Um, I, I related to myself and, and my brothers, right? We are very, very similar in age, same household, same everything. Um, and yet we're radically different human beings. Um, and now you can imagine that on a campus that has five, six hundred students where every single child now has different needs. Um, and you know, obviously the, the school site principals and the teachers and the support staff on that campus are charged with figuring out what, what is it that these students need? And that's what data is very helpful in doing. I think that part of what we hope to do is sometimes also when you're working in silos where you're not able to see data from other school sites, you kind of also get stuck on like, well, this, that's just how things are. And our, we're attempting to, to, to break down that barrier of, of, of data and just make it very transparent. And so we're promoting more and more of that so that a third grade group on one campus, say for example, the school sites you mentioned, um, can see the third grade results at another campus and they then in turn start talking to one another instead of the principal saying, hey, why can't you be like your older brother? Because that's an ineffective way, right, to create change in the household, similar to our teachers. Our teachers are hard-working professionals who know what's best. But at the same time, by presenting that data in the way we're doing, it allows them to kind of know what each other's results are. And it can extend that opportunity to collaborate.
One, one quick question. And, and just to verify, the curriculum is all the same. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And, and just a quick follow-up. Right now, is there, the only district-wide test that everybody's taking in math is this? The test like, like the April, May tests? Uh, or how are we doing the benchmarks? Because if, are there, are there district-wide benchmarks or just school-wide benchmarks? First of all, let's start there.
There are district, there's district-wide benchmarks across the district that are implemented to different levels of fidelity.
Got it. Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Uh, because uh, it's, it's hard to get a district-wide measure of one summative test in May if we haven't done district-wide tests in October and November and January.
Yes, so our high schools were the pioneers of doing this work. Um, so they're the highest uh, or most ahead with it. Middle school came second and then elementary is um is probably the one that I, I think would probably benefit from a little bit more time of, of refining that process. Uh, the refinement that has happened at our high schools after multiple years of implementation now, um, that benchmarking process is probably what attributed to, um, for example, the fourth school that um had double-digit gains is Lamradha that had
Right.
almost twenty-two percent gain in, in math achievement.
Yeah, we just encourage the continuation of that process of, of benchmarking so that because it's almost not fair. It's, it's such a snapshot. Everybody's been working really hard, doing their own thing, but working really hard. And then to say, well, let's compare one test in very late in the school year, when there haven't been any comparisons throughout the year. It's, it's hard to make it a, a realistic comparison. So I really would, would encourage that process of uh benchmarking, especially at the elementary level.
Thank you. Dr. Vidare?
Um, did I understand correctly um that schools are not able to see how they, each school is doing? Or are they, do they have access to this data? Do they discuss it? Do they work through it? Or I didn't understand that, sorry.
They have not traditionally had access to it. So back in sixteen, seventeen, for example, or, you know, as early, as, as early as eighteen, nineteen, that, the, the data that was available to them was perhaps publicly available. Uh, but to my knowledge, wasn't necessarily presented in the fashion that we're presenting it now. Um, where down to the grade level, you're able to see um how sister schools are performing. And, and I think that's healthy because it allows you to find comfort in the fact that there's other schools that are figuring it out. And, you know, that, that hard work has to be, and, and positive strategy has to be magnified.
And when did you begin to do this?
What's that?
When did you begin to share this information with them? What year?
It's progressively kind of increased every year in terms of how we're presenting it. Um, I don't think I could put my finger in terms of when was the first, we can get that information to you.
I was just wondering, maybe like several years?
No, I, I, I wouldn't say several years now. Um, I think that during the pandemic was the first time where like some of the data was so alarming that we were forced to do that. Uh, freshman fail rates was, I remember one of the ones that I shared before with the board. It was so high, it was a four-fold increase of two-year averages that, you know, it's easy to say like, just because of the pandemic, but that pattern wasn't exactly the same across all sites.
Well, thank you for beginning to share this information district-wide with and working through it or discussing it. That's very important.
Yeah, the goal is again to provide as much information for teams that they can then take action with um at, at the site level. Um, similar to how we presented data for elementary, middle, and high for all groups, um, we also are disaggregating it by EL um at the elementary level for math achievement, middle, and high. Um, the pattern for ELA math and science for EL and sped subgroups is, is obviously there's, there's a wider range of um inconsistencies, right? There's years where there's, you can see from this graph, for example, um, there's one year was really high and then it just changes. And a lot of it has, it has to do obviously with the, the specific needs that these two subgroups have. Um, and the transiguency of the groups as well, right? This is the, these are the two groups that happen to be the most transient. Um, whereas the, the graphs that you saw earlier um are, are way larger cohorts, right? All students on a campus versus just the EL population on a campus is radically different. Okay, I'm going to move on to now the uh graduation rates. Last time we shared that there was two schools that were increasing, one was about the same. And so now these are the projections for this year. Um, there are still students going to summer school. Our principals are working with Mr. Hunter um and their counseling team to kind of get the last few students in to finish. So that percentage will absolutely change because just solely based on summer graduation, but business rules applying as well. Uh, science achievement, again, we shared last time that we have a projected increase, slight increase. And now we can review it both by grade level, uh, district-wide, and also by site level at the elementary, middle, and high. And then by EL subgroup at the elementary level, middle and high. And lastly, our sped students at elementary, middle, and high. Um, again, I, I don't want to do this review, uh, uh, you know, disservice. You guys have hard copies. We will be posting it. Um, this is by no means a comprehensive, intended to be a comprehensive review of it. It, it's really just a starting point that allows us to start conversations. And um, I'm sure questions, not just in your mind, but in um, others who are reviewing it are going to keep coming up and we'll continue to engage and dialogue about um those, those items. are going to keep coming up, and we'll continue to engage in dialogue about those items. Early childhood, last time, we presented district-wide data for K first and second grade for the past three years. The trend that I reviewed with the school board last time is consistent pretty much across most school sites, which is that students in kindergarten don't have very many students who are three or more levels behind. But as the students progress through grade levels, that number increases. And I'm going to really quickly, again, you guys have hard copies. These are Glazier's results, the same pattern exists, Sanchez's results, Didi Johnston's results, Edmondson's results. There are some schools like Escalona, I believe Garden Hill was another one, where that issue isn't as large, however, it does exist there as well. Again, I'm just going to really quickly go through these. The key thing, and I know, Dr. Vidarli, last time you did inquire about the different domains. So I just have really quickly a summary is, it has a total of six domains. Phonological awareness is one, phonics is the second, high-frequency words is the third, vocabulary comprehension for literature and comprehension for informational text. So all six domains are intended to really give a grade level, overall reading level for that, but it's not a reading level that's tied to Lexile, right? I mean, I want to be clear. And that's kind of part of, you know, our challenge is providing teachers with the tools that they value. And that's why I mentioned last time, and we will continue to do that next year in terms of assessing what is working, what is not, and having them be the drivers of it. Because again, I was only a math teacher, I never taught anything other than that, and I definitely was never an elementary teacher. And that's something that I, we want to honor, obviously, the expertise that our teachers bring to this conversation.
Sorry, this is where I observe the downward trends from kinder through first grade, second grade.
And that pattern continues into higher levels as well. All right, college and career readiness. This is probably the most complex metrics that the state kind of has for us. These percentages here, the overall theme that I want to highlight is that college and career readiness is decreasing both at the district level and at site level. A student is considered college and career ready when they meet specific criteria or combinations of criteria. We can definitely provide a more deeper dive into what that is at a later time. But the purpose of just showing this is, you know, just to kind of give a snapshot of where we're at with these metrics. The 38.5%, this is the only one, and I'm looking at the first set of columns, the district orange, 38.5% of students were considered prepared or college and career ready. And that's the only one that applies to a cohort. So that year, there was 1,238 students that were in the cohort. And so 38.5% of that is about 443 students, right? 443 students were considered prepared in that cohort. Now, everything else is a percentage of the percentage, which again, is more complex than I would have chosen, but it's what we have to work with. For the first column here, 35% of students, it's not 35% of the 1,238, it's 35% of the 433 now, right? So again, this is the percentage of students who are considered college and career ready at the district and site level. And these percentages apply to the cohort, everything else applies to the percent of the percent. And so this is the percentage of students who are meeting career technical education pathways, that specific criteria. And again, the trend here is, with the exception of Norwalk, the trend is downward there. Another criteria for college and career readiness is students meeting or exceeding the CASP in both ELA and math. And this shows an upward trajectory with the exception of John Glenn. This is the only one we can do projections for because we have that data already. Kids have already tested. And so preliminarily, we feel comfortable what this is going to increase quite significantly because in 2024, there was only 209 students who met this criteria, and that alone makes them college and career ready. And this year, there's already 275 students that have met it. So there's an upward trajectory there. Again, minus the business rules, we're confident that that will increase. Another...
Just a second, Ms. Free had a question, and then Dr. Concio.
So going back to the one slide on college and career readiness indicator by school. So this tells me there is a decline, right?
Correct.
Do we have, I guess, the famous question, what are the reasons behind this, these numbers that are declining? And what are we doing in fact to make sure that we tackle that in the future so that we can see those numbers go back up again? Is it building those community relationships once again with our colleges in the area and maybe ramping up our programs?
Yeah, so let me, if you don't mind, I will answer that. The way a student is considered college and career readiness is by meeting one or many of these, right? I reviewed the CTE, the CASP, and this is the dual enrollment number. There's also two or more AP tests, there's also A through G requirements, there's also seal by literacy. And so to answer your question, there's multiple factors that contribute to this decline, right? One of them, I was an AP teacher when I was at the high school, and the interest of students wanting to take AP now has gone down. And the reason that is, is because there's dual enrollment now, where now if you just pass the course, you get credit for a course versus having to take a course, get a good grade in it, take a test, just one test on one day, and possibly not get a three. And at times, even if you get a three or higher, the universities don't accept that. So students are opting for one versus the other, that's one factor. Another factor, I think the CTE completion rate is struggling because in order for students to be considered TT pathway completers, they have to take a specific sequence of courses. And if they don't complete those sequences and complete the capstone course, then they're not considered completers. And so, you know, when a student's in 10th grade, they have an idea like, hey, I want to take this class because it's good. And then at the end of 10th grade, they're like, I don't like it, I want something else now. And so we're first with, do we force a child to now finish that pathway? Or do we give them the option of taking something they're interested in? And we often, nine out of 10 times, will give a child the course of choice because we want to keep them happy, we want to obviously have them develop. And it's not our, you know, we're not the gatekeepers of what the child is going to do or not do. And then at times, that is also an issue because our counselors have to face with, do I have the child finish the pathway or graduate from high school? Because if they fail multiple courses, now they're removed from electives. And because there's only one elective course that you need, right, to both be A through G ready and the elective count for our graduation requirements can be any course. It doesn't have to be the pathway courses. So there's really multiple, multiple factors that lead to that. There's also internal technical issues that we've discovered in terms of how we take account in things in power school and how that's reported at CalPads. We've discovered that, and we're going to be addressing that now. So that there is quite a few contributing factors to that.
Dr. Concio?
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. So I think moving forward when it comes to these slides, especially with the confusion of percentage over percentage, I think including the total population, the N, if it's a percentage, including percentage, because, I mean, like this slide, for example, it may be 15 students, it may be 15% of, you know, we don't really have like a true grasp of what that means. And then we, when it comes to the slides on percentage to percentage, we don't really know what that means because, you know, are things duplicated or are they not? You know, so having the total population and having the N is really important. So I think moving forward, if we could include that. I know less is more, but especially with these graphs that are great with the primary colors, but it should be a little deeper when it comes to numbers. Second, I know you mentioned that for career and college and career, like there's a decrease, but there's an increase in dual enrollment. But there's also been a decrease in dual enrollment in our district. And...
Just to clarify, there's actually not a decrease in dual enrollment. There's a decrease in dual enrollment as reported to CalPads, and that's the technical issue that we've discovered.
Okay.
Yeah, there's actually an increase in dual enrollment, a significant increase in dual enrollment.
By percentage or by total number of students?
Both.
Okay, I think knowing that, and that's why knowing percentages and numbers is important because it tells a very different narrative just seeing these graphs.
And just to be clear, the reason I chose to present it this way is because if a community member goes to the actual dashboard online, this is how that information is shared. The issue with showing numbers is that numbers can also be deceiving because if you have 100 students, pass two or more AP tests, and your enrollment declines by 500 every year, that 100 number may seem consistent, but it's actually going down as a percentage of the cohort.
And Dr. Sanchez and Dr. Concio, if I may, can you go back to the dual enrollment slide? This is one reason why it's super important that we report accurate data and that we scrub our numbers before it goes to the state, right? And so when we know that there are some technical challenges, we are going to rally together as a team because we may have more students in dual enrollment. If it's not captured by the state, our dashboard information will look very different than our reality. So data quality is very important. And so as we get closer to creating that kind of system, you'll see these charts. But this is, Dr. Sanchez has done a great job of giving us a template that we can refine and do the detailed work you're referring to.
Yeah, I know it's a little different when you see it on the dashboard, but I think, I know we're trying to showcase our wins on our district social media and website. I think having like a little deeper dive would be great so that folks know, hey, no, this is really what the true picture is compared to, you know, respective to our programs. And this is what we're doing, and, you know, in the same place that we're celebrating and showing pictures, then folks could see and come to understand. I know it's a deeper dive, and it was a conversation, a topic of conversation spoken about earlier. But CTE increasing in one particular site, I know you mentioned a couple possible reasons, but I'm wondering if it has to do with maybe culture and context of the school site. Again, that excitement from students that buy in for them to stay within that respective program. I mean, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, it takes a village, to be honest with you. I think that, you know, when you look at Norwalk and although, you know, this is one of the few years where they haven't had year-over-year gains, they've been increasing pretty consistently in student achievement as well. And so when you look at what's creating that, absolutely, there's multiple factors that create that. I feel that the counseling team on that campus is phenomenal, and that's now being magnified across the district because other counseling teams are like, hey, we can do it too. Obviously, the PLC work that we've done now for the last X number of years, we feel is contributing. And when a campus has, going back to my experience as a site administrator, I was at schools where people were real prideful to call themselves, you know, Lancers or Eagles or, you know, Matadors, so on and so forth. And there was other schools where people would go the whole year and not know where each other's classroom was at. And so as a principal, how do you change that culture? I mean, it takes a lot of time and a lot of hard work to create that culture where people do want to engage each other in professional practice dialogue, right? And that is why I firmly believe that just staying the course on the things that we already know are leading to positive gains is critical.
And I don't have a response for this, but I'm just tapping into my experience when I was a student in this district and really the early introductions on pathways. I know pathways are so restrictive. And, you know, if you stick to one, it's so difficult. So I'm wondering if, and I guess this is not, I don't have an answer. I'm not asking for an answer, but I think just a creative question to toss up in the air for the team is, you know, what are the core fundamentals that we focus on when it comes to pathways? That could be shared across them. So students feel like there's an extension of their participation in their respective pathway, and then it doesn't feel like it's so siloed, right? I mean, there are things that are overarching when it comes to some of the programs, but we've never really dabbed with that. So I'm hoping that we could do that in the future with the directorship, so thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Ling-Walter?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, that point that Dr. Concio was bringing up right there, that was what I was wondering, is I hear from some of our instructors that, you know, a pathway, if it's three years or something, it's such a commitment. And, you know, you're reporting that, you know, not every student sticks with it and does that. They have to say no to a fair number of things. And maybe it would behoove us to make our pathways shorter so that students could complete. And, you know, maybe even try a couple, at least have more options. Yeah, I've heard teachers comment about that, that it's a real drawback. You know, not everybody's going to complete three years of a pathway.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing that. And that's something that we're, I know that the board has shared that with Dr. Baker, and our team is going to be reviewing that during our summer planning. So it is something we're absolutely considering.
And Ms. Rios?
Yes, two things, a question. When is the agriculture coming up at John Glenn?
I don't have an answer to that, but I will work with Dr. John to kind of provide those details to you. I wasn't prepared to speak to that.
Yeah, just because, I mean, we're talking about CTA, we're talking about getting new programs, getting new things. I mean, if we're getting something and it's starting, I don't know when it's, if it's in the fall or in the winter, I don't know when we're going to start, right? But we need to start advertising what we have. I get multiple, multiple from ABC. And maybe that's because I'm kind of close to the borderline. But, I mean, they're advertising everything they have for gar, right? And everything they have, I mean, they're really pushing. And we, I haven't seen, like us, push, you know, maybe what we have at Norwalk, what we have at La Mirada. I think those are some of the programmings, I mean, that may, they may have something, but we may have something better. And we just need to start looking at that and pushing everything that we have out there as advertisement or pretty much, yeah. I know they're poaching our kids because I walk my area, I walk my kids. And, you know, I did see a lot of John Glenn signs out there graduating. And then, and then I also see gar or sorritos. I mean, they belong to us, but somehow, you know, they may get over there. And I think it's just something we need to push.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. I'll go ahead and work with Dr. John to provide you that information.
I'm sorry, I was going to wait till you got that slide, we flew right through it. A through G requirements by school, I did have a question about that one. Does that mean the percentage of students per school that are completing A through G?
No, this is a percentage of the percentage, right? So going back to the 83.6%, I can give you a concrete...
So that is 83%, 83.6% of the district high school students are graduating with A through G?
No, let me clarify. So 83.6% of that year's college and career-ready students met it, met that criteria. So of the 1,238 students in the cohort, 443 were considered prepared, and 83.6% of the 443 met A through G.
So this is the percentage of students that met that criteria through the A through G?
Correct.
Do we have a, do we have a, just straight up, how many percentage of graduates that met A through G?
That was not something we prepared for today, simply because that's not on the dashboard. This college and career readiness indicator has the A through G criteria on there, and that's why we chose, but we can definitely provide you with that information.
Yeah, I think that would be important information because I just, I'm concerned with that kind of a two-tier system where we say college and career ready for everybody, but really, if you're not A through G, you have very limited options, right? Your college options is community college only, basically.
Correct.
And so last I heard is around 40, 45% of our graduates?
It hovers around the, it's just south of 50%.
Okay, so just under half of our students. In other words, we graduate more students that don't qualify for anything but community college than... So it sets up a kind of a two-tier system where, and that's something I definitely want to look at is the percentage of graduates per school that graduate with A through G. And, you know, something I'd like to consider in the future as a policy initiative is implementing A through G requirements as possible, as a possible graduation requirement. Other districts do that where they match. And that was one of the recommendations of Arinda, specifically of the company we hired a couple years ago, at a pretty penny, to give us some recommendations. But, yeah, I just want to make sure, so this is the percentage of students that met the requirement through this method. But it's around shy of 50% of students that graduate that we produce a graduate but still doesn't have the qualifications to go anywhere but community college.
Okay, so I'm trying to reconcile something else.
Okay, so I'm trying to reconcile something else, discrepancy. So if that's the case, why do we have so many graduates with so many honors? How does, I'm not understanding.
So when a child takes an honors course, that's obviously, the student is challenging themselves for higher your curriculum, rigorous, more rigorous curriculum. To meet A through G requirements, you need to meet a specific list of courses and all you have to do is enter a C or better in either honors or non-honors. So you actually don't have to take any honors or AP courses to be considered A through G. The ongoing issue, just to speak to this a little bit, is, and we can definitely provide that information to you, Mr. Bresov, our counselors and I, you know, I help support them here at the district office when they come here and we give them a lot of collaboration time. Part of what they always go back to is when you're having to decide between having a child meet A through G requirements by completing that exhaustive list of courses or a child earning a high school diploma, the counselor will always choose high school diploma.
As they should, but if that, if that conflict is because of the 2.0 requirement, that's maybe something that's part of the discussion that we need to look at. If the 2.0 is saying, well, you're not going to take this class because we need you to graduate, so you're going to take a class that's easier, I can, you know, every counselor worth their salt would do that, which makes complete sense. But I think we need to take a look at the conflicting requirements because it seems to set up a system of a two-tiered system, right? Where, yeah, it's more than half of our students don't qualify for college, but they still graduate.
Yes, and then there's an added number of the, the number of students who do meet A through G and choose to go to community college first because of the high cost of college is also something that doesn't really promote students wanting to meet that criteria because of the route of going to community college to start with. But, yeah, we can definitely provide more information with that later. Real quickly, I just want to review reclassification data. Again, we provided general numbers last time. I don't believe we gave you a projection for this one, but we do have it this time. And there is a slight decrease in the number of students who are reclassifying. I do want to just briefly mention that some of these wild changes, right, like from 1819 to 1920, some of them are created by pandemic changes, sometimes it's policy changes. We can definitely provide more detailed information at the board's request, but I just wanted to briefly highlight the fact that we're aware of what causes some of these factors to happen. And then this is the disaggregated data by school site, by family, for all three families. And lastly, the equity multiplier for O Camino, these are the proficiency rates in CAS, ELA and CAS math. And that does conclude my presentation.
Well, if we haven't exhausted our questions so far, are there any other questions from my colleagues?
Thank you so much. It's a lot of information. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
This is great, by the way. This is for Simon Obas. Thank you. We're going to take a comfort break, a few minutes, and then we'll reconvene shortly. Action items, Measure G. Let's see here. And A through J, I'd like to do them all together unless there's any colleague that wants to pull an item.
So move all together?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, okay, motion carries. Item number 13, personnel to approve the declaration of need. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then the consent agenda, items 15 through 24. And once again, any, before we have a motion, a second, any colleagues want to pull any items from the consent agenda? No? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move it.
I second.
If we have a motion and we have a second, Dr. Vodari. All right. Since there's so much in here, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Ms. Free? Yes. Ms. Amesqua?
Yes.
Ms. Langwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Dr. Vodari?
Yes.
Dr. Consio?
Aye.
Dr. Bresov?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to board communications and we'll start with Ms. Langwalter.
Okay, thank you, Dr. President Bresav. All right, well, it's only been two weeks since the last board communication, but I had the pleasure of unofficially visiting La Pluma's after-school program unofficially as grandma. And I just have to let you know that it's not uncommon for the kiddos I'm picking up to not really want to go home. So that's a good sign. Just wanted to give them a shout out over there. Really appreciated Mr. Santian making himself available to meet with us over the budget and really go over it to any detail that we needed. And that was very helpful, along with plenty of calls from Dr. Baker. And the last thing I did in my school board capacity was to just attend the La Marada City Council reorganization meeting where the old mayor exited and the new mayor came in, along with the mayor protest. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Amesqua?
I don't have anything to report. Just wanted to wish all of our teachers, students and staff a safe and healthy summer break.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Free.
For me, I continue to have my weekly meetings with Dr. Baker. And during one of those meetings, I asked if I could have a little bit more overview on the budget that was presented today. So we met with Estuardo, who just went over the budget thoroughly with us and really with myself, Becky and Mr. Rios, and just really helped. and really with myself, Becky, and Mr. Rios, and just really helped us understand, um, m- many of the decision-making um, behind the cuts, uh, which just really helped us, uh, with our decision and just to feel more confident in why we're going in that direction. Um, I also want to say I've, I've also requested, uh, a tour of some of the Measure G projects that are taking place just so I can see what's taking place, uh, the constructions, and some of the, you know, upgrades that we're doing, like the, uh, HVAC there at La Marada Gymnasium. So those are some of the things that I want to take a look at, and, um, that, that's pretty much it for me. I don't really have any dates yet on when I'm going to be doing that, uh, but some dates were presented to me. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Vidal?
Thank you, President Brashov. Well, I had a call with Dr. Baker, but I substituted with the workout with Dr. Baker. We had a great time, and that concludes my reports. The Zumba, he did really well. I said next time I'll invite you to CrossFit.
Mr. Rios?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, I want to thank, uh, our Employees Association, uh, TANLA, and our administrators for, uh, all those scholarships that you guys fundraise and do for, through all the years for our students that, uh, may deserve it and, and need it, uh, which is something big. Um, so thank you for that. Also, um, stay safe, uh, out in the summertime. And I attended the, um, Norwalk Chamber of Commerce, uh, their reorg, um, which was kind of funny because everybody stayed in the same position as last year. Uh, and, uh, I want to thank Dr. Baker, because I know she was there with one of our, uh, community partners that, uh, gives a lot to, uh, our, uh, especially our migrant program and, and different, uh, entities who, uh, hopefully they can be part of that foundation that you, you've been trying to, to work with. And, uh, thank you for being there. Um, and, uh, surprisingly, I got, I got the President's Award, which I was not expecting, but, uh, I, thanks to the Norwalk Chamber, and, uh, stay safe, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Consio?
Thank you, Mr. President. So apart from my fireside chats with teachers and admin, uh, since graduation on all topics, um, I, along with, uh, our, our valiant president, were able to, was able to do a, like a fireside chat in the parking lot of La Marada High School, which then quasi turned into a gym tour, uh, with Dr. Gatto. But I think, um, one of the most important things that, that at least I took from, um, the conversation with, uh, with Ms. Haregi is you don't need to go into a school site to see what our schools need and what our employees need to make sure it's a safe place, uh, it's a good place to work, and it's a place that's receptive to, to the needs of the community, and but most importantly, a place where our employees feel supported. So I know that opened up a lot of topics, uh, that also the superintendent will be discussing. Um, and, uh, Dr. Gatto, thank you so much for, for coming and quarterbacking. Uh, it was, it was a good tour. You know, there was things that we saw that, you know, you don't have to go into a school site to see that there's some problems, but, um, there was rich discussion, um, and it was very receptive, very respectful. So looking forward to, um, not just more dialogue, but more importantly, solutions. So I think dialogue's important and it's great, but if we don't have solutions, then we're just talking for talking's sake. And so I think it's important for us to offer up, um, that fair hand and, and move forward on, on fixing some of these issues. I also, uh, met with Paso Robles Joint Union School District Trustee Castillo, and so we discussed the relationship between, uh, strong parent engagement and his focus on academic achievement and well-being. And so we discussed funding programs, um, at the state level, um, and that were grounded on collaborative partnerships and across district collaboration when seeking funding. So when we go to our conferences, it's important to build relationships with other board members. And so, uh, this is a fellow colleague in the coast, Central Coast. Um, also was able to meet with, uh, Almanac's Charter Academy Trustee, Koda, and we discussed the, the branding of school sites, uh, the school districts, and how we can employ AI in the success of addressing transparency and telling our story, which I think is so important in, in nowadays when, when branding is, is, um, it's, it's a great way to, to look at that, um, uh, look at the, the story of a school site, the score, the story of a district, but also using AI as a tool. Um, I attended Mass Heart Alaric Retirement Ceremony, and, um, I just, I realized two things. Number one, I can't take him anywhere, uh, because everywhere we went, people knew him. But number two, um, uh, there was a lot of alumni there. And, um, you know, they showed up to celebrate someone who gave a lot of their, a lot of his life to our district and, and the service of our school, so I want to congratulate him on his retirement and good luck, um, going forward. Also want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Magaña. Uh, I know it'll be very difficult to replace you, Ms. Magaña Los Alisos, but, um, I think we're trusting you. Um, and so good luck moving forward, and we are excited for your tenure. Also TFTI on the Zumba. Um, I just want to highlight that Norwalk High School's PTA has a Zumba fundraiser. So if you're down for the challenge, uh, Dr. Vidari and Dr. Baker, I will be attending that fundraiser once it comes out. And, uh, hopefully we could, hopefully I could, you could, you know, we could show off some moves, uh, but more importantly, and in support of our students, in support of our teachers in the school site. And finally, I just want to let everyone know, have a safe summer, please stay hydrated, and moving forward, no ties.
That is our usual tradition.
I had to make a statement, no ties. Please. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, community members, for hanging with us for this evening. Um, nothing to report, uh, I, well, one thing, I did have opportunity to, along with Dr. Consio, to, uh, have a quick visit, uh, and see some important issues, and, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Gatto. Um, and, uh, there's, and I, I look forward, like, like you said, I look forward to, uh, good solutions. And, uh, just, uh, my heart goes out to those, uh, continually affected by recent, uh, you know, federal law enforcement activities, uh, lots of families, I understand, are really affected, uh, some, you know, really staying in the shadows, living in fear, and that, my heart goes out to them. Uh, please know you're always welcome at our schools, and we will do everything to keep you safe and welcome. Thank you. This concludes our report, and, um, at this time, uh, we'll have a, take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, we're adjourned.